It's six o'clock on April 1st, 2024. I'll call this meeting to order of the City of Peru Common Council and the Peru City Hall Council Chambers. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Bob Huber and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy upon us. Lord, I thank you for this great country that we live in and this great city that we live in. I pray tonight that you would bless our mayor, our city council, our new clerk treasurer, Lord, that you would give them wisdom and grace and strength to do a job that they have been appointed to do, to do it with excellency and with integrity. I pray that you bless our police and fire departments, that you keep your hand upon them, protect them, bless our school system, our teachers, our students, our economy. Lord, I just pray your blessings and your favor upon this city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Anderson? Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Soduski?
I'm here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Lorrie.
Were we able to get her on Zoom?
She does not have solid Wi-Fi connection on her end.
Thank you. We attempted to get Councilwoman Lorrie on Zoom, but apparently we can't do that yet due to the connection. First order of business is the reading and correcting journal of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 4th, 2024.
I make a motion that we dismiss the reading and correcting the journal of the minutes of March 4th, 2024.
Roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yep.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sayadutchi?
Yes.
Sayadutchni?
Sayadutchni.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Lorrie.
Thank you. We'll proceed with the committee liaison reports. Councilwoman Murphy, do you have anything?
Yes, the Parks Board met on March 14th. Golf course officially opened on the 16th of March. The boat ramp project at West City Park has begun. They discussed having conversations with the mayor and Dustin about outdated bylaws and approved the annual light up the night on May 27th at the Riverwalk.
Thank you. Councilman Fisher?
Yes. I attended the Peru Utilities Board meetings on March 6th and March 20th as the liaison there, and they addressed a number of issues and approved contract for Peru wastewater plant upgrade and reviewed year-end financials. Miami County Economic Development Authority, I attended their elected officials council meeting as well as their board meeting on the 13th. Also attended, related to that, a stellar community meeting at River View Event Center that was put on by Makita. So we'll talk about that a little later on as part of our agenda. Miami County Recycling District, attended the Miami County Recycling District Board on the 18th and talked about a number of issues, including the possibility of placing a bin somewhere inside the city, as well as them being able to add some additional bins to really take on some additional recycling as a result of the Hardee's location recycling recovery that was closed down. Rediscovered Downtown Peru, attended that board meeting as an ex officio board member. Talked about a number of issues in terms of they deal with Second Saturday and also the Cole Porter Festival and also kind of administer the facade grants for some of the businesses up and down Broadway. Also attended the Miami County Central Dispatch Board meeting to listen to the concerns and challenges, you know, with the Central Dispatch. Also, as part of that, was given a tour of the Control 911 control room, as well as the rest of the facility and jail. Some of the other assignments, there was no meeting for committee, the Committee on Waste Negotiation or the Tax Abatement Review Committee. And that's about it.
Thank you. Councilman Sayadutchni?
Yes. First, I want to start with the county government. Okay, we met on Tuesday, March 19th. I just wanted to mention the appropriations or transfers, the immunizations, immunization grant for $56,000. Problem-solving court grant, $12,500, which includes things like incentives, drug testing supplies, graduation supplies. And then there was discussion on support for an additional full-time nurse. I attended the March 19th, Tuesday, meeting of the Board of Works. Just wanted to make the public aware that on May 11th is the Visual Arts Festival. There will take place from 10:00 a.m. until midnight on May 11th, and the 5th Street will be blocked off there. And then also, from June 6th to June 9th, the Cole Porter Festival will be taking place. And then for the Civic Center Committee, we met Thursday, March 28th. And basically what we're trying to do, the big main question, I suppose, would be, how does the city view the Civic Center? How can we advertise maybe more effectively? And do we, shall we raise the rent? So those are some of the questions we looked at. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Huber?
Yeah, last week I made it over to see Greg Douglas at the animal control, the dog pound. Got to talk to Greg. I like to go over and spend some time with him. They have, right now, they have seven dogs in residence. Last week, or at the beginning of last week, they took four. He's got a share program with the Marion Animal Control, and they have better placement, they have a larger population, so they take several of the smaller dogs that we have and are happy to get them over there, and they find homes for them sometimes when we can't. So that's helpful. There is a ventilation system that has been ordered and is, needs to be installed. We're just waiting on an installation date to get that done, so that's in the near future. I talked last month about that there's a large shade that we're going to have installed for the people that go to the dog park, to give them some shade while their dogs are out playing. That needs to be installed properly. It's a cantilever system. It's big, it's heavy. We want to spend some time, get with Bruce Carson, and make sure that that thing is installed to code. To me, those things look a little precarious. I'm sure if it's installed to code, it would be safe, but we want to make sure we do it the right way, so there's no question about that. Went down and saw Brian at the street department, and this, I don't know what day the 26th was, but last week is when I went down and saw him. They were still cleaning up messes from the storms. There was a lot of trees and branches and things down. They were working on cleaning that up, street sweeping, and then basically, so they'll be doing the downtown cleanup within the next couple of weeks. Went out and saw Kelly out at the airport. They have an FAA safety seminar on April 27th at 10:15 in the morning. If anyone would like to go to that, the public is invited. And they are getting the cracks in the runways and taxiways sealed, but they're waiting on the bids before they'll make a commitment to that. And then the 2024 Open House at the airport is going to be on September the 7th, and I'm not sure of the hours, but I'll have that for you later. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Stevenson?
Peru Utilities, as Tim said, approved the guaranteed savings contract for the Peru wastewater plant upgrade, along with approving the annual salary for the GM. They also checked the tornado sirens on February 28th. Miami County Economic Development approved two revolving loans, one out at Bunker Hill Mini-Mart, the other one being for a paint and pottery place here in Peru. And then they went over some of the land out at Grissom. That is all I have.
Thank you. Under unfinished business, we have three items. Resolution 3-2024. This was the resolution approving additional rules or procedures for council meetings. There has been no revision made to that for consideration, so that will not be discussed until revisions are made. Next is Resolution 4-2024. This was for appropriation for the Peru Fire Department. That was not advertised properly, so that will not come back to the council until the first meeting in May. We will conduct a special meeting on May 6th at 5:45 to consider that resolution. Ordinance 5-2024, the trash can rack and container ordinance. Once again, no revision has been presented for consideration, so we will not be discussing that until that ordinance has been revised. Under new business, we have several items. The first will be a presentation of Matthew Sturch and Joshua Schaefer outlining their previous classes on confined space and hazardous materials. Chief Dean?
Thank you, Mayor, for inviting us up here to kind of show us the council and the city on water firefighters you're doing, on duty and off duty. The Peru Fire Department would like to recognize Matthew Sturch and Joshua Schaefer for completing over 40 hours of training to become confined space rescuer technicians. Matt and Josh participated in this class that involved classroom and hands-on evaluations. The training that they acquired will help the department focus on the next steps forward with where the department might go in the future in regards to training and purchasing equipment for responses to confined spaces, which is very important because we are a backup for a lot of places here in the city. Once somebody goes in a confined space, we get calls, so that's why we sent these two to class, to kind of educate everybody at the department, because nobody's an expert in our department on this. So these two gentlemen went down and took 40 hours with the training. These two gentlemen also completed 40 hours of ASMAT training in the last year, year and a half, which will also bring it back to our department. They are at the technician level, which is one of the highest levels within our department, the operating end, so they will also be able to help train and move the department forward when it comes to ASMAT responses and stuff. And I think it's also notable that a lot of this training comes when they're on and off of duty. So they're spending their days off, they're on shift for 24, and then they go off for 48, and it's a week-long training, so they don't hit these very often on their duty days. So we appreciate these young gentlemen. Josh is a three-year veteran for Peru Fire, and Matthew is a five-and-a-half-year veteran. So these are the guys that are coming up to help our department and help train and build in the future. So I appreciate you guys being able to let us present these fine people tonight, and we look forward to what they can do in the future.
Do you guys work on different shifts, or are you on the same shift?
Different shifts.
That's good, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Come on, somebody's got to ask a really hard question. I told them back then.
Was this all onsite training, or was it chief or not?
They were both offsites. The confined space was in Indianapolis, at a training facility down there that does a lot of specialized training, and then they both took ASMAT classes and loads for them. And they did most of it on their own.
Yeah, great.
I think it's important that we recognize men and women within police, fire, and other departments that take additional training, and so often they do this training and do not get recognized. So I feel it's very important that we get you here in front of the council, so everybody really understands what's involved within the city and what it takes to make this city go, make it safe. I certainly appreciate you stepping forward and taking this additional training. Congratulations. Thanks very much. Next item of new business, a presentation by Propel US 31 South Study Team, an update on draft Level 2 screening report. Did not have that person, did we?
No, we don't.
Next item of business is a briefing on the 2023 Annual TIF Report by Mr. Jim Tid from Makita. Jim?
I am here.
I can see that.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening, Jim.
We didn't mean to scare anybody by sending this report out. I know you probably got this, and you probably wondered, oh my gosh, what's this? You know, if you've never been involved with TIF. And we apologize that we had to get this before you in a briefing to you without really having the time to sit down and talk about either taxing financing, which is TIF, or tax bait. We hope to do that here in very near future, whether that is here at a council meeting or some other type of maybe training seminar, those kinds of things that people do. But anyway, what you have before you, and what I think was included in your packet, is what's called a TIF management report. Going back, the Miami County Economic Development Authority serves as the redevelopment commission for both the county and the city. Each year, we are required by state law to prepare a management report on the TIF areas that are within both the city and the county. And just recently, this past year, 2020, or last year, law legislation stated that we needed to come before the council and make this presentation annually prior to April the 15th. And there is really no action for the council to take to make. The only thing that we need to do is to make sure that we are reported, given minutes, that we came and provided the management report and answered any questions that the council may have. So briefly, just going through this document, the first page, the first slide, just basically shows all the, and RDC stands for redevelopment commission. So these are all of our annual reports and things that we are required to do by state law. And you can see the one highlighted in red, that's where we're here today to provide the management report. The next slide over just basically shows a diagram of what TIF is. And again, we can get more into detail on this when, if the council wishes, come back and do a presentation on TIF. But basically, what happens is when we set up this TIF area, and it is a defined area within, in this particular basis, within the city limits, but it's an area where we can capture the redevelopment commission with the approval of the council, because you are the ones that approve the TIF. We can capture what's called the incremental assessed value within this TIF mission. So when we come before, we were to generate a new TIF area, when we come before the council, excuse me, to present this and you approve it, whatever the assessed value was in this particular area defined by property parcel numbers, that base assessed value is frozen. And that base assessed value continues to go to the city, just like nothing else ever happened. And then it gets distributed to the taxing districts and everything. So whatever that assessed value was stays, it's not impacted whatsoever by a TIF. However, what happens after that base assessed value, in other words, if we have a new company comes in and builds a new facility, or an existing company expands, then whatever that increase in assessed value is above the base, then is captured in TIF. And the taxes that are generated by that increase in assessed value goes into the TIF allocation area, or the TIF allocation club, to be used by the redevelopment commission for projects, mainly infrastructure. We can help with site development for the company, those kinds of things. A lot of things we can do with that revenue. But again, what was established, the taxes that are generated from the assessed value with the base, continue to go to the city. It's only that increment, that increase in assessed value that's captured in TIF. And then once the TIF is over, it's reached its maximum title limit, then all of that assessed value comes back to the taxing, and back to the city. So again, we can get into a whole lot more detail and actually run an example of how that works in the future.
Thanks for, I just wanted to intercheck. Thanks for clarifying that, because I think a lot of folks in the community don't understand that we still get the taxes on that base assessed value, and it doesn't all go towards TIF. And there's also, is there three TIF areas in this community, or how's that?
There are three, and we're going to go through those. There's a slide here that identifies those. But those are all under one development plan, and it's all within, called the city consolidated TIF area. This next slide just shows the purpose of the TIF. The next slide over that we have to disclose are redevelopment commission defenders. So this redevelopment commission serves two purposes. They are recognized board directors, but they also serve as a redevelopment commission for both the city and the county. I'm sure you're familiar with some of these people that are on this list. The next slide over, going to Tim, your comment, this is actually the TIF allocation areas that are established, and there are three primary ones with some expansions that have a. US 2431 corridor, that was the original TIF within the city, so that's basically the property out along Broadway, out where Broadway and Landon is, out along US 24. So that makes up that area. Then next was the West End allocation area, and that's basically all of the riverfront walkway where the new housing is, the new YMCA. It takes into account what used to be the old Kmart. It goes back towards the tracks and includes the property where Procter was, although that's not in the TIF anymore. But the old United Tech Building, all of that area is considered as the West End TIF. And then the Peru Industrial Park is also a TIF area in the community. And that was just recently expanded with the North Port Southern area, then also Square and White Street. The next slide over just shows all of the revenues and expenditures for each one of the TIF areas. So, and this again is for calendar year '23, so you can see that within the US 31 24 corridor, total revenues $111,712. Total expenditures $117,280. The West End, revenues $93,854. Total expenditures $162,353.65. And then the Industrial Park, revenues of $131,139.95. Expenditures of $134,960. So basically, you could probably say, wow, we spent more than we wanted to get in. Well, we did have balance left over as of the end of '22 to maybe expand that amount of money in each one of those. Part of the report that we have to show is any grants or loans that we made out of TIF funds. So there, at the bottom, you can see that this came out of the Peru Industrial Park allocation area. We basically granted $40,000 to Rediscovered Downtown Peru. That was basically, we have an annual commitment to them of $30,000 each year to help them with SOT, improve the program. And then Makita also sponsors the Cole Porter Festival at $10,000, which we provide through Rediscovered Downtown Peru. Next slide over, and this is probably going to get more difficult to maybe understand, but you can see this is all of the expenditures of the Economic Development Authority and the redevelopment commission for a whole year. So this is not only just TIF revenue. This is revenue that we take in from sale, we see a property at Grissom. This is all different kinds of ready grants, all those kinds of things. So all cumulative of all of the income that comes through the redevelopment commission, the amount that was expended is listed here. And then the next slide over just basically shows the fund balances. So as the end of December of 2023, in the US 2431 corridor, there was $28,167. The West End, $545. Peru Industrial Park, $849.38. So we do not have any TIFs. There is a separate designation for residential TIFs that deal with housing. We currently do not have any of those. And then the last page over is basically all of our debt payments that we have coming out of the city's TIF area. So you can see conditional project expenditure agreement, which was to help support settlement borrowers. You can see where we reimburse a certain percentage of your property taxes paid in TIF for a period of time. You'll notice on that particular line item, the principal interest paid on the debt was zero, because that property has not yet started, or is not on the actual, as we expect their first distribution of property taxes to be in this year. The next conditional project expenditure agreement, TV 3 LLC, is Haco Johns. The next one down, B&amp;M Partnership, that's for the commercial building where First Farmers has its new satellite location out on North Broadway. Conditional project expenditure agreement for City Square LLC, that is basically one south Broadway where two days deep is in Grand East Plaza. And again, you see zero. We expect this to be the first year that the company has to have. The next one down is an actual bond that the redevelopment commission issued. This was for the YMCA assistance, and actually for the completing of the walking trail, walking path. uh, walking path, uh, from behind River View out to Nipple Plate Trail. So that's the debt service we have on that bond. Wall Bash River Equities is our commitment to the housing, uh, development. And again, you see it's zero. That is not yet on the factual. And then the last, uh, was a, when, uh, that redevelopment commission put out to help the self-disroils situation down at, uh, Wall Bash River Equities, which is the housing development. The last page up here is just a bunch of footnotes, uh, regarding, uh, social material containment and vertical. I'm sorry I took so long to go through this, but if you have any, answer any questions that, uh, the council has.
Jim, I have one. You mentioned, uh, there, there was no residential allocation at this point. Now, might that change in the future or?
We hope so, as we have interest with housing developers wanting to build, uh, homes. So yeah, we're hoping that we create at least one or more residential tips.
Okay. Thank you.
But that will be with your, with your approval. We hope to be able to present that to you soon. Any other questions? Again, thank you for your time. Uh, and if you'd like us to come back sometime, uh, kind of give an overview of TIF, be more than happy to do that. We, we got a little, uh, game of play, a little fun, we kind of show how the money is dispersed and those kinds of things. So thank you very much.
Hey, Jim, are you going away?
Am I going away?
Cause it says you're going to talk to us about the stellar.
I'm going to turn it over to.
Oh, okay.
Just Brooke to, uh, talk. I will come up here and say.
Well, I didn't want you to leave too soon. I like her better.
Well, I, I, I understand.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Uh, as mentioned before, uh, this is just a report to the council. There's nothing to consider or, or to vote on here. Uh, next item is the introduction of resolution nine dash 2024, which is an interlocal partnership for the Indiana Stellar Pathways Program. Looks like it'll be presented by Brooke.
It will. Thank you. I think you guys all have a copy of the resolution in your packet. I have extra copies here if anyone. Um, going back, uh, the Indiana Stellar Pathways Program, uh, the city of Peru applied back in 2015, correct? And at that time, we were one of the finalists and we were able to do a strategic investment plan at that time, which has been very useful over the last few years. Uh, we completed a bunch of projects out of that. Um, because of COVID, they stopped the stellar program and this is the first year back. There have been a few changes to the program. Uh, this year the program is more of a regional approach. And the state, what they mean by region is a county approach. So we're working together as a county. Um, I know Tim was at the meeting, Bob, you were at the meeting as well. Um, we had a meeting with all of our, uh, communities in the county to discuss if, if, if this was something we would want to do to apply, um, as a county and, uh, pool our projects together for the current. Um, and of course we've discussed this with the mayor as well and he's on board as well. At the time, at the meeting, they did decide they wanted to move forward. So what we have in front of you tonight is a resolution, um, supporting this. Our first step is to apply with our letter of intent, which is due May 1st. Um, we have contracted with HWC, um, to put that letter of intent together for us. Um, so May 1st, like I said, is when the letter of intent is due. And then in June, they will pick four finalists again. Those four finalists will receive $50,000 to do another strategic investment plan, uh, which would be great for us to go through that process again. And then in January, they'll pick two winners. And at that time, um, then we'll be able to apply for the grant funds and get some projects going. So like I said, this resolution, Dustin did approve the resolution. He went through it and put it in his, his format that he likes. Uh, but the resolution is just saying that, um, you will, you will partner with Miami County Economic Development and the other communities in the county, um, to go together with the letter of intent and the application.
I would just add a couple of things. There is going to be paid a lot. If we get selected as one of the four communities, which I think we really have a good shot at getting that, it is going to be a very, very competitive project because you're basically, and I think on the back of the resolution is a list of different funding agencies that are involved. And when you look at the Office of Community and Real Affairs and their Community Development Lock Grant Program, they have set aside $8 million to be split by the two communities or projects in those communities. And they can lead light elimination, rehabilitation. There's a lot of different things that that money can be used for. But when you look at the value of some of those grant programs, it's going to be very competitive. Uh, and we're really, what'll happen is part of their evaluation is they'll come to our community and, and want to be, uh, wants to take a tour of our projects and hear about things that we've done and all those kinds of things. So we really have to put our best foot forward. Uh, if, win and if, I'll, I'll say win, okay? Because I'm, I'm, now I might eat my words, but, uh, I feel like we have a very good chance of getting in this, uh, initial, through this initial round of partnership.
And can you, um, we were talking about amount of maybe, what was it, 90 million? Or what, what was the, the pot, potential, uh, grant amount?
I think the total was nine.
Nine?
Yeah, about 90.
Okay. Yeah. Well.
This is a smaller program.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, 90 million total.
And again, what this is, is we'll have to work through the process with the city and with all of the other communities in the county to put our best projects forward. Um, and to be, uh, you know, a, 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 a project will, will have to identify what is it? What pop does it fit best and what grant source should it come from? And then there's always the requirement for the local match, uh, partners. But it is a significant opportunity if you receive that stellar, uh, stellar designation.
Thank you for this, uh, introduction into the Stellar Pathways Program. So before you, you have the resolution nine dash 2024. Uh, resolution of the common council, city of Peru approving the interlocal partnership for the, the Indiana Stellar Pathways Program. So we would need a motion to consider this.
I would make a motion to consider. Second.
Roll call.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori.
Is there any further discussion on this resolution? If not, then we need a motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt resolution nine dash 2024. I would second that.
Roll call.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori.
Next item on our agenda is, uh, additional appropriation, resolution 10 dash 2024. This is a, uh, request for medical equipment for ladder one. We will need a motion to consider.
I'll make a motion to consider our resolution number 10, uh, dash 2024. Second.
Roll call.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori.
Chief Dan, could you come forward, please?
Sure. And this is a request, um, from the OGOI. With the new ladder truck, um, one of the things that we missed when we were equipping it, and mainly it's because we weren't for sure exactly how we were going to run the truck. Um, but each one of our trucks at the station that we run out, whether it's on a DLS call, a fire call, a car wreck or whatever, we run with a D-Fib and a tech kit in there. The tech kit includes all the OGOI, uh, reduction drugs and stuff that we can carry, the Narcan. Um, with the ladder truck, we didn't plan on having that on that truck because we weren't going to run it first out to begin with. Well, with the development of that truck and all the equipment we put on it, that's what we're going to do with it now. Um, and in years past, what we would do is we'd rob off one truck, put on another. Not a real good system because any of those trucks could get back out on a call at any time and then all of a sudden it's not on that truck. And then you're going down the road to get fuel or whatever. You get a call, you gotta respond. You don't have the stuff with you. So we're looking for $3,000 to equip, uh, the new ladder truck with a D-Fib and a tech kit with all the OGOI stuff. That's basically the request. I did talk to Dustin about this and he said it's within the parameters of what the grant is to be used for. So, uh, one of the commitments I made when I took over as chief, I would always look inside the department where we could take money from our funds and stuff and also, um, where we could get grants to, to afford this stuff. So. Any questions?
Thank you, chief. So this will be brought up again, uh, in the May meeting. Uh, special meeting at 5:45 on May 6th for, again, for consideration and adoption. Not showing anything more on our agenda. Uh, we'll go to communications. Are there any further communications from the council?
Um, yes.
Go ahead, Will.
Oh, I just wanted to, uh, compliment Homestead Barnes and the city. They obtained a grant to get these, these benches and trash cans and bike racks installed. And I think it looks good. I think it looks good when people go through town. Uh, it's a big improvement. And man, those guys hustled. I don't know how many, what the total number is of what they installed, but they did it fast and they did it efficient. It looks fantastic and I think it's really cool. I remember when I was, and I told my wife about this and she didn't care. But when I was a kid, I remember going through town and now that I am one of the old guys and all the old guys would sit on benches out in front of the businesses. And I just always thought that, I don't know why, I thought that was cool. So I'm looking forward to sitting on a bench in front of a business. So I'm just real happy about that.
You want me to play music for you?
Let's not get carried away yet. You have your bench, I'll have mine.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And, and I'll just clarify what Bob said. You know, that was funded, uh, by a grant, a T-Mobile grant that Chamber of Commerce, uh, worked with T-Mobile to obtain that $50,000, uh, award. So, um, you know, that was, you know, Sandy Chittam and, and Chamber of Commerce that, uh, uh, the, the new T-Mobile manager came to her and, uh, asked her to pursue that grant. So. Um, and I just had one thing. Uh, we, we have two open positions. Dave Moon had asked me about this on the cable committee. I don't, I just wanted to extend if there's anybody in the audience or knows of someone that would like to serve on this cable committee to submit a letter to the, uh, to the mayor of your interest in that. So.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Any communication from the audience? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Cy Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.